What do you want to have enough seats for?
I don't, it is really like
Yeah.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here in this wonderful place. And we put up on your shoulders to represent the people. Help us all to listen and understand. Help us to have a good understanding of our community and be aware of things that are going on. Help us to collaborate with people and make this community the community we want it to be. Help us have the compassion and determination and the courage to move forward and make good decisions. In the best of any prayer. Amen.
Amen.
The leaders of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God and individual liberty and justice for all.
Lord, would you please call them?
Peters.
Here.
Fontaine.
Here.
Foles.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Easton.
Here.
Sorel.
Here.
Six person.
Motion to excuse member Holt.
So.
Jeff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Also let the record reflect, Director of Administration Patrick Pore was out here. Okay, for your consideration, Council meeting minutes, June 24th, 2019. Committee to hold meeting minutes, July 1st, 2019. Special council meeting minutes, July 1st, 2019. Council meeting minutes, July 8th, 2019. Financial report, June of 2019, and financial report, July 2019.
Motion to approve, that's presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward and state your name and address for your right.
Flint Osborn, 307 Frederick Street, South East North Canton, Ohio. I'd like to address the proposal, this 57, 2019. That's the proposal to eliminate permits for cement work on private property, residential apartment, whatever you want to call it. This needs to be thought more thoroughly through. The permitting process protects homeowners, it protects abiding property owners, it protects neighborhoods, it protects this city. If even anybody ever has gone to a permit, they're basically outside work, an addition or contract work. All right, you're asked to draw a block plan showing where your work is going to be, where the management of your property is. Certainly this helps send behind, there are going to be setback requirements and all that. You're going to get guidance, you can get questions answered. It is vitally, vitally important. So once you start down this path and questioning, well, we don't need to require a permit for this or a permit for that. Cement work is probably the next largest expenditure a homeowner will ever make in their property next to a new roof. If it's not done properly, to remove it, you're going to have, it's in concrete. Great deal of expense, needed equipment. It needs to be done right. You've got to have the proper amount of basement material, crushed stone underneath of it. It needs to be poured to at least like four inches thickness so it doesn't break up whenever you have the occasional delivery truck on your driveway or something. This is the wrong path. Now, Mr. Soreta, his argument was, we have contractors who are complaining about the expense. Folks, the contractor doesn't pay the permit fee. So that blows that argument either way. And it's well worth it, again. The homeowner is getting the guidance, they have that added protection. And also during this permitting process, it kind of creates a database at City Hall when certain work was done on your property. Say you were going to buy the house, and you want to know when was the roof put on it, when was the driveway poured? When was the addition put on it? It serves as another source of information. That should be quite right. Where you went wrong here about five or six years ago when you alluded to it and said like everything else. You just carted wax, raised all of the fees. I just put a roof on my ass. I paid a hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents for a permit. Several years back, I simply wanted to replace the plaster and lather that was in the bedroom. Tear it out and put up drywall. I was required to get a construction permit. I don't know why. I'm not structurally changing the house. Now, I did pay for a electrical permit and I fully expected that because again, I want that independent second set of eyes. Not only watching the work, because I was going to do the driveway work on myself. But the contractor, whoever you're hiring, needs to know that hey, somebody else is watching. You're going to have your builders who maybe don't do a lot of work in the city of North Canton, but they'll take a job whenever now and then. Mr. Van Gundy is about here. They must be licensed to work in the city. I think that license fee is two hundred dollars. They may only do one or two jobs in the city that whole year, but they're already at two hundred bucks. Now that's what you ought to be looking at. Lowering speeds, maybe just the contractors. Please, don't just bribe ahead and move it. It's a very important part of maintaining your neighborhoods. You want to talk about economic development, we want to build in our city the right way and do it right the first time. So please scrub that, go back and look at fees. And by the way, the drywall and electrical permits, I paid more, I paid like a hundred eighty-five dollars that time. That was more than the cost of my drywall. But I paid it. I thought the permits people were wrong in requiring a construction permit. The electrical permit I was glad to pay because we all know certainly plumbing electrical. But also again, concrete. Also, you're worried about drainage, water runoff. So you want to know where all this water is going to go? You want to make sure they put in their downspouts before they pour the concrete, not afterwards?
We can talk about that later. I did let you pull.
I understand. Thank you very much. Please, I beg you, I could sit on my knees and beg if you wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Larry Tuck, 127 East Maple, North Canton. Last Wednesday, I attended the North Canton School Board meeting in which their members approved the resolution opposing the city's forthcoming legislation on DRDs as recently discussed. Speaking in favor of this resolution were four North Canton residents who openly spoke in a very fine manner against DRDs. No one from this city, including any government official representative, spoke against this resolution by the school board and in favor of any CRDs. Three years ago, basically the same city planners who sit before us tonight tried to hide the North Ridge apartment fiasco from North Canton residents on an outrageous tax abatement given to a local development on this copper. This cover-up was foiled by the due diligence work of some city residents in attendance tonight. The fall guy for this abatement fell in the lap of a then economic development who retired shortly after this abatement became public. Did he act alone? I know my beliefs on this, but we will never know. Mr. Mayor, during a subsequent council meeting after the revelation of this abatement, the following were yours spoken words. It's, how come did somebody do that? Why would you even do something like that? This is stupid. I agree, allowing to be taxed again. So now, in 2019, we are seeing and listening to DRD discussions contagious to the city school officials and reminiscent to North Canton residents with its surrounding secrecy. Nothing really presented that shows any visible impact towards a greater North Canton economy. I read the minutes of the June 3rd council meeting. Council of the whole meeting, and it was in this state that not one camp council member spoke of what positive gains the city would receive, other than, this is great, let's get it done. How long your council even knew of the May 29th meeting with the school officials by Mr. Viorio, Mr. Vole, and Mr. Peters, in which they walked out of that building? Were they in their place when you were discussing this on June the 3rd? In today's times, are you sure you want an entertainment district? I know you don't want everyone scared, but in today's times, aren't you creating new and different problems with an entertainment district for a city created with a faith-based belief? Seeing or hearing nothing on this since June 3rd and with nothing in sight, probably looking at codes, zoning codes, will this be like ordering toll-free 2019? Main street business and simply die? I hope so. Maybe, maybe it's too touchy of a subject right now before election time. Two, Arrowhead Golf Course. Who let this happen and why did it happen? Did somebody, probably tell somebody to just bury the contract for a while? Who knows? What happened? Why did it happen that we got such a mess at Arrowhead? The council clerk, fiasco, number three. Four, cost to the city, probably in the neighborhood of a hundred and two, a hundred and fifty thousand. It can subdue these, a hundred and fifty thousand in council chamber relocation. Cost to the city in the neighborhood of around three hundred thousand. No, Mr. Mayor, Council President, we're going to need a lot of synergies to make up three hundred thousand dollars. So, again, Mr. Mayor, who could do something like that? Who did something like that? I firmly am of the opinion it is North Canton city government officials for which you are the mayor and Mr. Peters, you are council president. You two have supposedly been leading this city and North Canton government keeps failing its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else who should address council, please step forward. State your name and address.
Doug Wacker, 730 Portage Street. I don't really have any prepared statements to bear with me. I grew up in that house and my parents lived there 50 years and I recently bought the house from them. I had a newer house near Green Town. But I didn't want to see someone else buy a new side or whatever, but I love history and that was one of the reasons I bought it. And I recently did a tour a couple of months ago, Portage Street, about fifteen people attended. It's covered by the 720 Market Magazine. And that street is very historic, has a lot of history to it. And one of the pieces of history there is the Portage Street School. And I know this isn't a direct topic tonight, but I want to see consideration given when the time is appropriate if it's sold by the school owner. That it potentially be repurposed for. I know I went to Little Billy's and freed one recently and they repurposed an old brick school and have galleries there. They have companies and shops. And so I'd like that school to be considered for redevelopment as opposed to being just demolished. I'm not opposed to redevelopment in the city. I know that helps keep the city alive and attracts people and money. But I also want us to try to be mindful of our history that's left and not destroy as much as possible. Because that's part of the character of the town. And when you start wiping that off the map, a lot of people lose emotional passion to it. And also, if that house, if that schoolhouse was removed, just think how different it would look on Portage. And I could see potentially some of the homeowners there decide to move out and become more rentals. And that would even make, you know, about the worst situation. I'm a landlord myself, but I know that having tenants is not the same thing as having homeowners. So anyway, I'd just like for that to be a consideration whenever that comes about to try to repurpose that school.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I get the spelling of your last name, please?
W E C H T E R.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Anyone else who should address council? Do you move on with old business? We have a motion, a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number 52-19.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
No.
Member Foles, vote?
In ordinance amended, chapter 902 sidewalk policy of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton. Specifically amended 902.01 installation sidewalks and declaring the same in ordinance.
Chairman Fontaine.
Okay, so we talked about this a while back, just to refresh you. We had three basic criterions that we had the majority of those, two of those, to be able to do sidewalks or do certain things. You know, around these criteria. So what we're doing is revising and say, one of the three criterions would be acceptable to be able to do sidewalks. So this is not an emergency because we want to do sidewalks. I think it's East Hill Engineering.
Yes, sir.
So I know if we pass that, if you have any questions.
Member Fontaine, real quick, Doug, is that it? Yes, yes, thank you. I'm for sidewalks. I'm a no vote because I think we need to think how we're going to fund these in future. There's a lot of areas that don't have sidewalks. I think we put the criteria in place for a reason. I was only looking compromised to have this being grant funded and to move forward with it. But I think council is always making a decision just to when made, when the criteria steps. So that's why I'm a no vote. I think we need to think what we're doing with our existing sidewalks and new sidewalks. And I'm all about walkability in the community. I think paths and sidewalks are great. I just think there could be a lot of areas where people will want sidewalks and we start putting them in. And how we address them, the older sidewalk areas, it definitely need repair.
That's a piece of my suggestion.
Right. And I understand, but in time, I just want to let you know I'll be a no vote so you don't want an emergency tonight. That's the second to read. So you can come back in September and ask for a third reading.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, do you have a motion for the second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Member Foles? Pass five, one. Okay, we have a motion for the second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number 56-19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carries?
In ordinance amended, chapter 902 sidewalk policy of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton. Specifically amended section 902.02 existing sidewalks, 902.03 new sidewalks, and 902.04 participation voluntary requirements to qualify as described below.
Thank you, Chairman Fontaine.
Okay, so this is a little bit more ducks alley. What we're trying to do is, you know, address some of these sidewalks that people want to have addressed that are existing, that are hazards. And they can use halfway. So they can petition the administrator. There's going to be a form that they can get. It'll be a time of year to do it. And then they'll go out and verify the job as being a fifty square feet. And then once we identify the people that need some repairs or replacements, and it could be sidewalks, it could be the approaches or whatnot. And then what would happen is, is they would be responsible for fifty percent of the cost. We would get the cost and coordination because what we've been doing is packaging a whole bunch of these, stringing them all together so that when the contractor does the work, he can work him into his schedule to save us money and make it way more efficient and cost effective for the consumers. So that's basically what we're trying to do. And then of course, if we expand it out on the road with grant monies and other things to see about adding sidewalks in certain areas that we talked about before, and then laying in other areas we believe that to be more walkable and safe. So that's basically the gist of it. And I think it's good legislation. So there you have it.
A motion?
I have a motion and we should pass that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Kathy, do we plan on, how do we plan advertising this option? Because we know that if we don't get enough participants, it's not going to, it's not going to happen. So is our plan in the newsletter, is it on the water bill, obviously, through the website? I feel as if, you know, nobody's going to know about it and we're not getting any participation. I think it's an extremely important part of replacing sidewalks in the city.
We haven't gotten that far, but we can use all those methods.
Well, I would hope that our news service officer was going to include the people. If he walks around the c stand, he would, you know, tell them about the program and tell them this is something that can occur. Because there are a lot of sidewalks and our news service guys are going to try to lead guidance. And then if people want to get them, it should be their second calling to probably move on this.
Well, plus we have council members in all centers in the city, so we can share the word. We have the newsletter, we have Facebook, we have Instagram, we have a little bit of our own communication. They have people to harass. We just, you know, share the word.
I think it's a great start. It's something we're going to need. And we'll change it as we go through this. It's not, but it's a nice start to see what we're going to do. Anything more to add to that?
I was just going to say utility bill wire is a great way to reach everybody. And then like the other way, we need to be happy with social media. And people have it registered on our website and push notifications, that's the text messages and the emails that come out to you. That's a great way to do it.
I think it's great. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carries? Do you have a new business? We have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number 57-19.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carries?
In ordinance amended, chapter 1171 administrative powers of the duties of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically section 1171.06 schedule of fees pertaining to permits and fees for cement and private property and public private.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, I'm going to defer to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fontaine.
I'm sorry to drop it. As part of the discussion, can we also discuss the need for a public hearing?
Yeah. Okay, so we discussed this last time and this, again, we went through this by inviting contractors because we've had a lot of bad, of bad works back porch by not just cement people, but based on our permits and everything. So this really wasn't to appease a contractor, but we, it's probably what we should be doing all the time is listen. Listen to these folks, what's the issues and how we can work in it. And in this particular situation here, we did go through the process here and we, after talking to them and looking and talking to Marty, especially last week, to put us more in line with other communities because we're still, we're really much stringent, much tighter, which can sometimes reduce people from adding on to their home or putting new sidewalks or drywall and with our fees and some of the permits that we need for things that are right on their own profit. So we do want them to prove that, to improve the value of their homes. So we came up with this plan here with the administration and the folks, who's Darwin and Don at the meeting and Pat was leading it, to, again, not require permits, but still require all the other policies, setbacks and everything else on private property. Anything in the right of way, permits are required. That's us, we need to make sure that that is done correctly. So this not only, you know, makes the process of really cement work more affordable and modernized, if you want to call that, and favorable to the consumer, it helps things, get things done, you know, in the community. And it also makes it easier for our community to get things done more so than our members should pay 1.5%. So questions? It sounded like someone had a few questions on it and?
I was just going to say real quick, one of the big things they have this year is if we just do two slabs of concrete or three slabs of concrete in the existing area. That was really what this thing is about, not going to permit, it's not creating a new space for going into the city zone. It's just more within the footprint of the existing concrete for the most part. And there are people that are approved through the city and all the other departments and so forth, or that are approved through the city. And the big issue was, we were having, besides the cost, we were having struggles with trying to beat the weather guidelines. Because we had, you know, you pour concrete, you can't pour it in rain and you have tight windows of opportunity. And a lot of times, I think one of the big complaints I heard besides, we talked about, was being able to get the project approved in between raindrops. And it's a big loss leader, so you've got to be really efficient and really tight. So as long as we're working with professionals, they understand, they have good reputations. I think we're going to win in the long run and it's going to make it more user friendly for the people that want to live and play in our community.
And you had mentioned something, go ahead and explain that.
And to any, obviously China, if you'd like, you were the one that's mentioning this to me, but because of this changing zone and playing code, we need a public hearing.
Can't hear.
We need thirty days to focus on that, and obviously some time to get a deposit for you. So if you'd like to, you have to schedule that in early October if you're willing to move forward.
Early isn't quite in the apples, October seventh. September thirtieth really will be the Monday, we will not be moving today. So if you want to do it on October seventh?
Yes.
Sure.
Would you like to be prior to the committee meeting?
Please.
Set sports on it?
Let's do that.
Thank you.
So I'll retain, can we begin the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
The motion is second.
Motion is second. I'll retain motion, so move this on?
Motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries? Okay. May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number fifty eight dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to execute an agreement with the right of proceeding and adopting an extension and authority method for apportioning the Stark County undivided local government fund for years two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-two thereto, and declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Ware.
We talked about this last week, and how the Stark County, like council governments had that, and it was on June fourth, to talk about the review of these funds. And there's basically two ways that they, I guess, prepared these over the years, and they were looking at the alternative method. But the difference this year is we're reviewing the census, so they want to wait, kind of see where that census falls out to decide where the money's going to go, along with some property kind of disputes, and then, and then reassess at that point. But it's a committee that kind of speaks on hold for everybody, and Laura said, why do things? Correct. So no issues there. So if there are any other questions about that? Okay, then I move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Okay, may I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number fifty nine dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton on board control approval and to a professional services extension agreement between the auditor of state, de-favor auditor, preparing associate served by the local accountants, to an independent public accountant IPA for annual financial audits for years two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three, and declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Ware.
Again, we talked about this, this is just procedural. One question that was asked here, or last week, do we pick the state to present or whether the mayor can, um, sub it out? And we not given a choice, so we've worked what apparently says is before when we brought it up. Correct. And that's who we're looking at. No more questions, and we do adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
Chairman. In ordinance authorizing appropriate issue of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from the city of North Canton funds from the unappropriated resources of the municipal road fund for costs related to the East Hill Street reconstruction project, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Ware.
These are just the additional funds that are needed to finish up the East Hill Street reconstruction project. Any questions, concerns? Okay, and move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty-one dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance to approve and adopt, firm replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, I'll turn this over to our finance director.
Thank you. As we discussed last week, we went through the whole process to get the ordinances from the past year and any that had been missed from prior years into our codified ordinances, working with a company that helps us with that. As we went through and did our double checks, of both the printed version and the website version, we found one error. And so we contacted them last week, they got that updated, it's in the updated packet that was sent out. And now everything is up to date on both the web and the print version.
Any questions?
May I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? And a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty-two dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
Chairman. In ordinance amended, chapter one eleven, council of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically chapter one eleven point zero one meetings, time placed, and recording procedure. By revising subsection eight and F as described below, declaring the same to the emergency.
For those of you that were wondering why this was a, is a special meeting tonight, this, this, and why? Because it still has City Hall as our council chambers, after tonight, that'll be changed. So Lawrence, anything else?
No, we're just changing the address to this building.
Any questions? May I take a motion to the second?
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty-three dash nineteen?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Municipal Bridge Inspection Program for the purpose of inspecting and evaluating the East Hill and Glenwood Bridges, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chairman.
This is Tony.
All right, Chairman Fontana.
So, so basically, we talked about this, this is just an annual thing that we do every so many years, right? Every, I think it's over three years or two years?
The program is for three years.
Three year program?
We have to do it each and every year.
Okay. So we're going to inspect the bridges, or not, they are, ODOT's going to pick up the whole town so there's no cost to the city residents. Correct?
Yes.
Anything more you want to add, engineer?
No, sir, because it's for three years from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so it's going to be on an emergency, so I recommend we pass it.
Second.
Can you pull your own, we can't do that on emergency, right here, okay?
You got to, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
It's, you've got a motion in the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? And motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty-four dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to prepare and submit an application to Ohio Department of Works Commission for a grant for the Tenth Street Northeast sanitary sewer replacement project, and authorizing the mayor on board control approval and to agree for second reading, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, now, Chairman. Okay, we discussed this last week, it is what it says it is. It's a application to grant for the Tenth Street sanitary, which is in bad position, it's moved. So, any discussion, further discussion? Now, move that we approve, it is on an emergency, but let's just grab it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? May I have a motion in the second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number sixty-five dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Department of Works Commission for a grant annual loan for the Sludge Press Installation Project and on board control approval and to agree for second reading, annual loan, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, we discussed this last week, it is, like I said, it's a submitted application for a grant for the Sludge Press. So I, I move that we approve it, it is on emergency due to time string. So I move we approve it in the first.
All right, second, we say a second.
Okay.
Why is it finally?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Motion in the second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Finally, a motion in the second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? Okay, reports, we're going to start to the right here, W, your editor, Mr. Rachel.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with, uh, one of the things that the administration, remember, we're working on is the twenty twenty census new construction program. And, well, we will designate a new construction program liaison. And what that does is, um, that will, um, help to ensure an active population count for our community. So that will help federal government district more than six hundred seventy-five billion in funding the infrastructure programs and services, and helps us plan for future needs. So we, you know, we've got expanded, um, new construction, new homes, and we have the, the shop bases and the sanctuary and rock and et cetera. So that's something we'll be working on. Um, a couple other notes I just wanted to make. Um, thank you to the North Canton Chamber for membership festival, the history festival, people out there, a lot of people there. We moved the elements of the better, had a little rain, but did, did a great job. And also, this coming Monday, there's no, Labor Day, we don't have a meeting. We have a concert, so one of the steps of the work co at five P M is the pops concert. Bring your own blanket, kind of, bring your own chair, and enjoy the concert on Labor Day.
The time is it?
Five P M, Monday, September fifth. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Captain, Mayor?
Yes, two items. Uh, first is, this is the second meeting that we've had here, uh, the council chambers, and we really like a lot. I think that, um, you know, from the administration, the Patrick, Kathy, and, and, you know, just all the departments did an excellent job putting this together. Uh, we've got a lot more space, we got our first swear again, of our first police officer in this new building. And, uh, so it's just going to be a process of continuous improvement. But I think what's going to be, you know, what the goal is, is to allow our city government to be more cost efficient and effective. And by bringing the departments together, uh, the engineering department, and also the permits department, bringing that up to City Hall, then the residents don't have, you know, multiple locations to go to, they have, uh, they have one location, which would be really good. And we're already seeing, uh, how much better the communication flows in our departmental through the change. Uh, secondly, we have an update with, uh, with D-Bol. Uh, the good news is, is that, you know, they, you've seen recently when they made the announcement that they're going to be transferring the, uh, their division, which is down south, they're going to be bringing that, uh, those employees and posting new jobs up here, it's going to go in the smartest building. And what's good about that is that even with, uh, the tax incentives that we offer them, uh, with the income tax, that's going to increase our overall income tax, which is what our goal is. And then you'll see too, with the property tax, just like you see with the Hoover District, when you look at the particular parcels of land at the Hoover District, because we went through them, and you looked at the, the land value back after the Hoover Company left. And for example, one parcel was seven hundred thousand, and now it's been appraised with the county government at four million dollars. One was as high as eleven million dollars. So you look at all those multiple parcels, and you see that the property value of the Hoover District has improved by millions of dollars. And so that's what our goal is overall, is to build a tax base. You, you bring new jobs, which brings up the property tax value, and brings up the income tax. So that's what our overall goal is, and, and we're just really pleased. And I do have a picture, I had a picture texted to me, and I can send it to the sheriff of the council and also the public. Uh, they've transformed the inside of the smartest building. It looks beautiful, it's all redone, and, uh, and now they're working on the parking lot and the outside. So you'll see that as that property value goes up, then the, the surrounding properties will go as well.
Thank you, Director Long.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to read an announcement from the city of Ohio Board of Pharmacy that was posted while council was on break. This is going to cause us to amend apportion of our codified ordinance regarding the definition of marijuana. And the title of this is called Guidance on Products Derived from Hemp. It was signed into law by our Schleswig-Hellner, just for a note that in the House, the vote was eighty-six in favor, three opposed, in the Senate, it was unanimous. And the statement is that recent updates to Ohio law, this refers to Senate Bill fifty-seven, changes the definition of marijuana to no longer include hemp and hemp products with a THC content of no more than three tenths of a percent. Hemp products including hemp derived CBD, cannabidiol, can now be sold outside the licensed medical marijuana dispensary. The law also requires the Ohio Department of Agriculture to establish a hemp cultivation and processing program. This will include licensing of hemp cultivators and processors, requires the department to adopt rules governing the operation of the program. So effectively, this legalizes the sale of what you often see, science or C D E that is now permitted to be sold throughout the state.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chairwoman Ware.
Director Fong.
Thank you. I received some good news this morning from the Board of Elections. We got our official approval of our two renewal letter, the ballot language that will be on November. The one is a mill for street improvements, the other is one mill for stormwater improvements. Again, those are both renewals and we got the official sign off from the Secretary of State and the County Prosecutor's Office. So that's what's good to know that those will be on the ballot if you have trouble. Also, coming up soon, you'll see the utility bills that will be hitting the mailbox this early next week around September first will have an increase because of the new Kimball contract. Every three years, in the past, we've rebid that contract that happened this summer and so prices will increase due to that. But prices have stayed the same since twenty sixteen, so it will be.
How much will it increase?
Thank you for asking. Your curbside regular service is going from fourteen dollars and five cents a month to fifteen seventy-five per month. The garage service for, for residents that like to have that picked up at the garage is going up quite a bit more. It's going from sixteen ninety-five to twenty-five fifty. Because Kimball does have increased costs on sending the driver, the employee up the driveway to the garage. So I'm sure we're getting a lot of calls and if you guys get calls, we appreciate you passing the word that is the new contract price. There will be a message on the utility bill as well. And then finally, another reminder, I know I sent out an email to council a couple weeks ago, but Rita, your joint contact agency, did send out about three thousand letters to those who had not filed tax returns in the past three years. You may have gotten some calls from residents. We've gotten a lot of calls in my office, we've been talking to residents pretty much all day today and late last week. Again, this could be someone who doesn't need to file. If you're retired, you simply need to call Rita, let them know that, they'll flag your account, you won't receive any more letters. Could be as simple as that. If it's someone that wasn't aware, if there was a filing requirement in North Canton, maybe they're new to the city. Again, go on ritaohio.com, defile that return and it should be taken care of. Any questions on that?
My question's going to be answered by Rita tomorrow, but I did receive that, I filed in on the eighth quarter.
Okay.
And I still got something saying that I don't want to third, whatever, I make sure the total was, so.
And maybe an issue with your estimates depending on how your income fluctuates, you're.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
But if you call Rita, they can definitely help you out. You can always call us in the finance department, like I said, we've got lots of calls today.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, as you can notice, was day one of our sixty-day Ever Harbor detour proposal. Monitored it quite a bit today as well as county engineer staff and our police and street department. And all kept it on okay. A little bit of the five, six minute delay in Glenwood, but didn't seem to go quite smoothly. I think it's time to go along with adjustment, public adjustment. Would have intended to follow the sign detour, which is Charlotte and Portage, Dr. Whipple, Main Street, Thirty-Eighth Street to the south, not Sawa Way. We did get some signage up there, the street department, and increased law enforcement presence today. Just to keep, you know, it's a city street, it's public right of way, you can't not allow traffic on it. But we put some signs up, local traffic only, just to try and urge people to follow the sign detour. Yes.
I had a call right before I came today, a gentleman on Glenwood said that's, they're taking a lot of cut-throughs there, they'd like to see a sign that says local traffic only. But they said between four and seven where the stop sign is there, where it backs up, where he said he could put a police officer there, just to rush it through. But I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, we talked about that, I talked about that with the county, there's an assistant county engineer once you're five thirty, at five thirty, that Glenwood, Glenwood four-way stop. We talked about that. We really feel that that would entice people to take the non-detour route, for them on to it. But we still really like the person to take that sign detour route, like following that and.
Maybe the local sign that says local traffic.
We believe that we made two, one on Sawa Way and one on Glenwood, put another one on Whitehall.
Yeah, that would be good and like you said, the status closed down. Thank you.
Please, Mark, just tell them.
Thank you, Brett. Member Fong.
I just wanted to say to everybody, happy day-to-day, we had a few beautiful days, probably had a nice weekend. Make sure you enjoy some of the city services. We have the park, the pool, the walking trail, ice cream, Main Street, we got a lot of great little places to frequent. And of course, don't forget about that barbecue, right? Let's just have a great weekend and everybody have a little downtime. Have a great weekend.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. What time's your cook day?
So, report, baby.
Member Wong.
Thank you. Thanks to the administrators that are working on everything and my own special, when we see grants, that's Rob, that's the administration, so I want to thank you for that. You know, we have the availability of doing formal work because we're shovel-ready and I'm on projects. And it's a testament to your dedication to the city and moving us forward in that degree. I mean, I got calls about the intersections of Apple Road and North Man. Did talk to a few gentlemen about our plans in place to temporarily fix that so we have a better price on some of that project work. But also thank Doug Wecker and his comments. I don't want to forget about the Portage entranceway in the city, I think it's a very important thing. I know we're looking to just maybe pave it temporarily, but I don't want to forget about the gateway and we just brought it up. It's going to be eventually some great things happening in Hoover District area and I think that's a natural way to come up seventy-seven, especially now. Didn't see more, more traffic on Portage and Charlotte, you know, the other part of closure, so I want to revive that discussion and look to improve that streetscape and the roads and sidewalks here, so. Thank you for everybody's dedication to you.
Doug, Member Ware.
Just a couple, thank you, so Brian Hill and Kathy Farina, we played it back to you really quickly on different issues. And we have a few things come up at East Woods and I appreciate that help and support there. Rob, that side has been great with really all the summer projects, I feel that people know that it's ahead of time. I think that's really important, just people just want to know. Like when you're sitting on a plane, you just want to know when it's going to take off. And it's the same thing for the roads, so thank you for that. Do you really think it's going to be sixty days? Can you say that?
Don't do it.
If they wanted. Okay. And I know I did give you up some of the things and I worked pickleball and stuff, but when we were over there the other night and just to see the families have a plane and they had their balcony and so they saw the half-generational family. So it's just, it's stunning to see, it was the night that it was, there was crazy storms were coming through and people did not leave those courts until the actual wedding day. But I just think that was so proactive and we really used our money. And I also noticed that Eastwood, tennis courts are just more, just people are forced to go to nice courts and the lights have been great, very, very good to place that. The playground equipment there, and Brian Hill and Ray were there to talk about that, so. Thank you for the hard work.
Thanks, Stephanie. Member Keese.
Member Wong.
Member Sirah.
Couple things, you know, we sit here, I mean, all the time, but this is the problem. And as leaders, we're problems解vers, that's just all we give and that's all good stuff. But there are so many wonderful things going on in our community and we haven't really met. So I wanted to, I know a Pat right here, he could go down and list here, so I wanted to go down some of the things that happened here while we were gone or in the summer. Some of you can probably chime in on some things here. Seven twenty, of course, that kind of started off, that was the, that was success. You know, the library, that's their fun night on Fridays, the night I could take my grandchildren and that, that is awesome. They've done, that is, they have a church that kind of helps do that and it was like a festival, every Friday night, you have a nice movie here. So wonderful things with that and of course, we did our Main Street festival, thanks to folks that were dedicated to that from the chamber. The Purple Heart, the Memorial Purple Heart, that was, that was really kind of a neat situation, we put up another podium dedicating to Purple Heart. There were like forty-five Jeeps and motorcycles and more coordinator of Purple Heart recipients there. And that's very touching to hear their stories and so on, but the mayor did a great job, I'm talking about that. The roads are getting down at record pace, you don't notice that, but they are compared to what we usually move in sewers. The D-bol job creation and the increase in jobs, I mean, that's all we talk about here. But when we do have that, let's celebrate that. School startup, no safety issues, that's huge. And in fact, I want to tell a story, we walked around town and I noticed a couple of spots were around the schools where the bushes were out over the sidewalks. And I thought like I called in a pad and I seen they were done. Brian Hill was out there next day cutting those pads, we need to remind people, they got to cut the bushes so it picks up the water. Mostly also to see what's around the corner of that and that's very important. Our parks, you know, all I do is if you Google parks in this area, Crest Park comes up first. That's a pretty cool thing. And some of the new park projects are probably going to be started with here. So these are wonderful things that we sometimes forget about what's going on, the free concerts that were mentioned here. Our safety services, so we are really so blessed, but let's make sure that we continue to talk about those things. Because not every community has that, we take it for granted sometimes. We go to other communities and you ask them what they're doing, they're trying to get this stuff, all right? So we have these, let's keep it moving with that. That's it.
It's a good reminder, Dan, Doug, thanks, Mark. Okay, the upcoming September meeting scheduled next weekend, or next week, Labor Day meeting. The following, the night will be a council meeting, special committee if needed, because we will not be meeting on the sixth meeting, this committee is booked. September twenty-third, regular council meeting, and September thirtieth, Monday, no meeting. Okay? That concludes our agenda, here, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Mayor.